I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to today's retreat. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Here, Fleming.
Here.
I share Davis.
Here.
Trevor DeMarty.
DeMarty, here.
Secretary Hatcher.
Here.
Trustee Kate Morgan.
Here.
Trustee Milliken.
Here.
Here.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, thank you. All right, public comments. Is anybody here from the public like to make comments this evening? This is your chance. Okay, seeing none. Down on tab one, we have the honorary degree recipient process. I think there was, there was like a worksheet that you guys all got in one of your board books a while ago to put down names and whatever. Those names are due April 8th, so just send it all into Vanessa if you want, and she'll collate it. So if you have any ideas, send it into Vanessa. All right. Tab two, the star for the evening will be mostly VP Barnes. Take it away for our financial forecast.
All right, good evening, everyone. So I'm gonna, as usual, walk you through the budget process that we have here at the college. I'll hit some of the highlights of this year's budget and extended forecast, including the revenue projections, the expenditures, operating transfer projections, and then finally a statement of activities and some cash flow numbers. So just as a reminder of our process here at the college, it actually starts even before the first bullet. We, in December, we send out some guidance for everyone, so they kind of know what to do and what the expectations are in terms of budgeting. But then the budget managers in every area, they use a tool that we have called Anaplan that the budget, or the board approved a few years ago that helps us to collect all that data. It helps us to optimize how we allocate the budget because it gives immediate access to historical information by account, by org. So it's, makes it very easy for the departments to look and build their budgets. So they did that throughout the month of January. They sent that to finance in February. We consolidate it, we review it, we understand it, and we figure out how we're going to fund it. We then reviewed that with the president in early March, and now here we are today on March 27th to do the budget retreat. And then you'll see the final budget proposal in April, which I'll present to you, and then that would be on the board agenda for approval in May. So just hitting some of the highlights. Of course, we're planning to maintain a balanced budget in fiscal year '26. Our goal is always to keep the in-district tuition flat. That's our goal. That's why we try to manage our finances so closely, is we like for the students, especially in-district students, to be the beneficiaries of the Washtenaw County taxpayers. Credit hours, I'll have more on this in later slides, but we're projecting the credit hours will fall 1% this coming fiscal year, and then 2.5 and 3% in FY '27 and '28. And you'll see later that that's an improvement versus what we've been projecting in prior years. We also are going to be investing a lot of funds, meaning we're going to be investing in high priority activities such as enrollment activities. Some high-demand classes, we have like math, for example, more part-time instructors, welding, more full-time instructors, advanced transportation, more part-time instructors, plus a lot of lab equipment. Student and faculty support, you'll see we have a lot of student support. It's like tutoring, more tutoring, we're hiring more part-time tutors, more librarians, for example, and faculty support. Also hiring part-time support for Canvas transition, helping to answer questions with Canvas and the like. New equipment and facilities improvement, we've got a larger budget for equipment this year, particularly instructional equipment. Again, investing in our academic programs as well as investing in our facilities, you'll see, for things such as auditoriums, classrooms, and such. And then, of course, we continue to strengthen the balance sheet. And when I say having a strong balance sheet, what I'm referring to is having assets that greatly outweigh the liabilities, particularly liquid assets. And what that does is when we're entering volatile times like right now, we've got a diff, we don't know what the economic climate's going to be, we don't know what the political climate's going to be. When you have a strong balance sheet, you can continue to operate, and you can continue to, more importantly, invest as you work through these economic times because some colleges or any organization, when times get tough, the first thing you cut is investments, and then you start cutting other things. So when you have a strong balance, you don't have to overreact in those situations. So how are we going to finish the current year that we're in? Nothing on this slide should be a surprise. You hear most of this from me each month when I present to the board. In terms of tuition and fees, or I'm sorry, in terms of revenue, we've had stronger-than-expected tuition and fees, stronger-than-expected investment income, and stronger-than-expected auxiliary income, meaning conference services, public surplus, and the like. Personnel expenditures largely related to vacancies and attrition savings there. Non-personnel expenditure favorability, we've had some unspent funds that we've re-timed some expenses into fiscal year '26 that you'll see. So, for example, we are planning to do a web refresh, our website. We had planned that for this fiscal year in FY '25, but we postponed that to FY '26. So that's why there's some favorability there as well. That's just an example. We'll get into more of that later. And again, the balance sheet, the strong balance sheet, which I just talked about a bit. But over on the right-hand side, you'll see that we are expecting to finish the year quite strong at over $10 million favorability. And you'll see how, what the, how the balance sheet and how that it's actually turned out to be optimal. It's not too much, it's not too little in terms of what we have set aside. So getting into the upcoming year, FY '26, I'll start with the property tax revenue. You've seen this chart in prior years. We're projecting that the property taxes will increase by at least 3.1%. And we can always predict that floor. We don't know what the ceiling is, but the floor, we can always predict. And we know that when home prices are rising, that the year property tax bill will go up by the inflation rate multiplier. The inflation rate multiplier for the coming fiscal year is 3.1%. So we do know that our revenues will be, especially that we're in Washtenaw County and there's no properties that are really being taken away. It's just being built and more construction and so forth. So we're expecting something north of 3.1. I would caution, though, over the last 30 years, the average has been 2% or 2.2%. So even though we've been living through three or four years of what I'll call boom times, these aren't going to last forever. We are going to revert to the mean. That's, that's, that's the whole purpose of the Federal Reserve, for the people that you, people that were at the speech today at noon, that we will get back to that 2%. So we've taken advantage of having these three or four boom years. So when we get to the three or four bust years, we're prepared. State aid revenues, we are projecting state aid revenues to increase by 2%. The governor has actually called for an increase for community colleges of 4%. However, she also called for 4% last year. She did not get the 4%. So we're not counting on 4%, so we've put in 2. I put there the red bullet item, it's just a bit of a risk. We do know there's a lot of things going on at the Federal Department of Education. So how could that impact us? To the degree there's less funding available for K through 12, for example, if that were to be the case, the state may have to divert funds to keep supporting. So any, any federal funding that is lost by the state, it puts our funding, you know, it could put our funding in jeopardy. So we're just putting that as a little bit of a word of caution. In terms of other state funding that we get, such as LCSA, which is basically the personal property tax, as well as the MIPSers offset budget, we've approximately aligned that with prior year. In terms of our tuition revenues, again, we're projecting the coming year will fall by 1% and the following two years by 2.5 and 3% respectively. So this is improved from last year, as I mentioned before. We had been projecting a 3% decline. But things have been going well with Michigan Guarantee. It's also been going well with our enrollment initiatives. So we are not expecting quite a decline. We are expecting, in fact, the fall of this coming, this coming fall, we're expecting to actually have higher credit hours. But unlike this year, where winter tuition has been higher than fall tuition, we are not expecting that to continue. We think that's an anomaly. So we do have the winter semester going back to the norm, which would usually be about 2% lower than the fall. So that's what we've projected. So that net is what is resulting in the fall of, of 1%. Supporting that improvement is the Michigan Guarantee, as I mentioned, as well as reconnect, and as well as some... Okay. As well as some dual enrollment that we're expecting to increase. So those are all tailwinds for us at the college. Some headwinds are futures for frontliners and reconnect ages 21 to 24. Those two programs are phasing out, so those are headwinds. And we are, again, we think that this, projecting it out a little bit conservatively, with the 2.5 and 3% decline. We're trying to be good stewards, knowing that this enrollment cliff is coming. And again, I'm repeating myself to a certain extent, but we don't want to ever get ourselves into a situation where we're having to make painful cuts in the budget. So we try to plan so that that doesn't happen. So this is a chart that you've seen in prior years. This shows you, the green line is Washtenaw Community College, and that is, shows you the enrollment trend over the past 10 years or so. So you can see that the credit hours here at Washtenaw Community College have fallen by about 10% over that time period. Whereas at all other Michigan community colleges, credit hours have fallen by 34%. So you may ask yourself, well, why is that? Why would Washtenaw Community College be so much different than other colleges? Well, this is a key reason. This dotted line that you see here, what we've done here is we've excluded online non-in-district students. So the online strategy, obviously, we like to attract a lot of students, both in-district and out-of-district. Without those out-of-district students, we would be in the same boat, if not a little worse, than the other community colleges in Michigan. So you can see here, in fact, we, that large spike on the dotted line around COVID that would have happened, we didn't experience that. We didn't experience that. The solid green line shows you that it was offset because we were able to pull from other counties, other states, and even internationally. So it was a, it's a, we're, it basically gives us a diverse, diverse revenue streams so that when one's up, another's down, and then when that one's down, another one's up. The more diverse your revenue streams, the better. How do we come up with our projection? We'll look at the chart on the right. The Michigan high school graduates are represented by the yellow bars. The solid green line is where our credit hours have been, and the dotted green line is what our projection is. So you can see here that even though we do have quite a bit of, quite an adult student population here at the college, our credit hours are very highly correlated with high school graduates. It's very highly correlated. Now, that correlation broke a bit this year. Why is that? So we're attributing that lift to two things. One, we've got a renewed focus on enrollment management. Dean Leszkowicz and his team have done a tremendous job. They have about 70 different initiatives, if I'm not mistaken, to get students in the door and not only get them to here, but keep them here. We've seen that help a tremendous amount. We've also got Michigan Guarantee, which has also helped bring in more students to the college. So we're expecting that lift because we're continuing those enrollment initiatives. We're continuing, or the state is continuing the Michigan Guarantee. We're expecting to maintain that lift, which is why you see the dotted line in the future remains above the yellow lines. It's not on top of them, but it does still decline. We can't, we can't help, there will be fewer high school graduates. So there will be an impact, but that lift, we can maintain. We think that's what we're expecting. This chart shows you our face-to-face classes versus our online classes. So I mentioned last year, we think the students are tiring a bit of online classes. We've seen face-to-face coming back each and every year. We had been projecting about a 2% increase per year, and that's about what is happening. You can see on the green bars that about 2% up each year, and that's what we're going to be continuing to project over the next three years, is that will continue to move up at about a rate of 2% per year. I would mention that this is also includes the summer semester. The summer semester is highly dependent on online students. So it distorts the number a bit. But if you were to look at just the fall and winter semesters, which are more, the more traditional students, more than 50% of the students are face-to-face. They do come to campus. So the next slide here is our tuition revenue projections. That gray sliver at the top is a little bit of a tuition rate increase for non-in-district students that we'll talk about in, at a later time in this meeting. But the green area represents on-campus, the revenue we get from on-campus, and the yellow area represents the distance learning revenues. So distance learning still contributes about 52% of our tuition revenue. And about a third of our revenues come from non-in-district students online. Fee revenues, this is simply following the credit hour projections. So as credit hours slightly decline, you see a slight decline in these fee revenues as well. But we really, we only have the, well, there are certain fees in here, but this is primarily the infrastructure fee and contact hour fees. So here's where we get most of our, or all of our revenues from, represented on this chart. If you look at the green area of the graph to the left, you'll see that that's pretty flat. Those are the tuition and fees. So tuition and fees have remained pretty flat over time. So how have we compensated for that? Primarily through the yellow and blue areas of this graph. So the yellow area being local property taxes have increased, particularly over the last three or four years. And the blue area is our other revenue. And other revenues are our investment income. So as you know, interest rates have remained pretty high, and we're expecting them to remain pretty high through the next three years. They will come down a bit, we're projecting. And the Fed is also projecting that they'll come down, but at a slower pace than we may have been expecting a few months ago. The gray area has increased a bit. That's the state monies, but not substantially. It's generally 2% or 3% per year. So here are our revenue details. So some of this you've heard on prior slides, but these are the actual numbers. So you'll see here, we're forecasting tuition and fees at about $35.4 million for FY '26. And you see that coming down a bit in the following years with the credit hour decrease. Local property taxes, again, we're expecting that's going to go up by 3.1% this year, which we've got it represented. In future years, we're projecting at a 2.5 for the time being. But again, that should revert to the mean of closer to 2%. State aid, we've got that going up by just under 2% going forward. We generally project the state will give us about 2% more in operational funds, but not necessarily more related to MIPSers offsets and personal property taxes. So it's a slightly less than 2% projection. Trade partnerships are quite a bit up, and that's simply because the IBEW, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, that's a new contract that we have starting next year. So they were on-campus this year, but they were not a contracted partner with us. So they didn't appear on our trade partnership line. So you see that going forward, which is why you see the substantial increase in trade partnerships. Investment income, again, we're expecting it to remain relatively high. It does decrease over time a bit with the, with the interest rate decline, but still remaining quite healthy versus historical interest rates and interest income. Other, other is actually going down a bit. We've tried to be a little bit more conservative in our projections of our other income, particularly with respect to contract training. So you do see that going down a bit, but we think that's very achievable. And auxiliary activities, we have that going up versus prior budget. That forecast number of 2.1, again, the IBEW this year appeared in the auxiliary activities line because it was not a contracted trade partner. So that goes up to the trade partnership line next year, which is why the 1.45 is, goes down versus that this year's forecast. So in total, you'll see that revenues are going up by approximately $7 million, and then up slightly over the succeeding two years.
Quick question. So on this revenue detail, are the trade partnerships, investment income, total other, and total auxiliary, are those all wrapped into this blue thing on the previous chart? That has the blue, there's green, yellow.
Correct, yes.
So all of those four items make up that blue?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm just asking, could you just go a little bit more in depth, not a lot, about the total other? I know you mentioned one, but what about the health and fitness? Is that a part of that, too?
So the Health and Fitness Center does not appear in our revenue line. It actually, it actually appears in our transfers line. So the Health and Fitness Center is not part of the general fund, which is the numbers that you see here every month is the general fund. They're in what's called the auxiliary fund. So what they do is, they basically send us transfers periodically. So it's akin to receiving a dividend payment. So they operate, and they have their normal operations, and then approximately once a quarter, they pay us a dividend, so to speak. So we're expecting that transfer this year to be $1 million. Next year, we're expecting them to transfer in $1.25 million. And then the following years, two years, $1.5 million.
And that's because of the COVID and, because a lot of things had dropped off at that time. You know, memberships had dropped off, and so it's now climbing back up.
It's now climbing back up, yes.
Okay, gracious, thank you.
Just in relation to the transfers from the Health and Fitness Center, we, we get those transfers, but we're also paying off bonds.
Correct.
So right now, we don't get quite as much money as the bond payments. But in two years, you think that that'll...
This coming fiscal year, we will get, our projection is that we will fully pay for the bond.
Okay, so that'll be wash, basically. We're getting the transfer to pay for the bond. When are those bonds paid off?
By, you'll see later, in 2027, they're paid off. So in fiscal year '28, you'll see the benefits of that bond being paid off.
So then we'll have transfers in without the bond payments out?
Correct.
But we may have some preventative maintenance or ongoing rehabilitation of various parts of the, of the Health and Fitness Center, which will be expenses.
Yes, but we have ongoing maintenance now. So the only thing, so it wouldn't be something new. We always do ongoing maintenance. The only thing you might have is if we do an extraordinary project, like if we were to completely renovate the locker rooms, that would be an extraordinary project. That wouldn't be just ongoing maintenance. So we could explore something like that, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
I would say, too, the, the Fitness Center has broken even over time. So even, even though we went through the COVID years, if you look back until 2007, the Fitness Center has broken even over time.
I just want to make a personal statement that when we look at the value of the Health and Fitness Center, not only to people on this campus, I also look at it as a value. If people are able to use that, Fit, Health and Fitness Center, if county residents are able to use it, it's providing a value to county residents who are taxpayers. So I see a constituency being served by that. Fitness Center beyond the immediate constituency here on campus, the staff, faculty, and students. I just want to put that on the table.
I wanted to show you where's, how our revenues compare, some of our revenues compared to other colleges. First, tuition and fees. You can see here that the only school that has lower tuition and fees than Washtenaw is Wayne County. And the only reason we're not the absolute cheapest is because this is looking at all tuition. It's not looking at only in-district. You'll see in the tuition and fees presentation later that, you know, in-district, we are, of course, the most economical. But holistically looking at all our tuition, we're still the second. So we have low tuition and fees. Also, interestingly, state, state operations appropriations. If you look at this on, this is FYES basis, which is how the state looks at it, which is fiscal year equated students. So they basically take all of our credit hours divided by 30, and that's your fiscal year equated students. So this is how much money we get per student, if you will. So Washtenaw County, we get less than any other school in the state. Oakland, Oakland and Schoolcraft are similar, but even they get, you know, again, on a per-student basis, quite a bit more than we do. Yes. Generally, I mean, generally, it's a, it's a historical, it's based on history. So it's something that we probably should look at, but these institutions had different sizes 40 years ago, 45 years ago, right? So these operational expenses were set based on the size of the school at the time. But over time, some of these schools have gotten bigger, like Washtenaw. Some of these schools have gotten smaller, like Lansing. And, but they're, the funds haven't adjusted accordingly. So if you look at Lansing, for example, Lansing's a pretty big school even now, but on FYES basis, they're the third highest. Because relatively, relatively speaking, 40 years ago, they were bigger.
I just want to say, too, I'm glad you went into that, and I didn't have to, but... But another reason, too, is because the schools have different, unlike... They're the northern part of the state, and we're the western part, you know, the lower part. I mean, we're the lower and they're a higher part of the state. And so their demographics is totally different. And so their programming is totally different than our, our area. So that's a lot of that reasoning of why they get more money. And plus, they, they cry more than we do. So, you know, I hate to use that word, but they do, and they always have. So, you know, I hate to use that word, but they do and they always have for years and years. But any case, some schools are still struggling, even though they're getting higher state appropriations, they're still struggling very bad. Thank you.
So moving on to our operational expenses and transfers. We are of course, going to have some contractual as well as some non-contractual labor cost increases this year. As you know, we're currently in negotiations with the W C C E A. We are projecting utility costs to, to rise in both rates and usage. The, in particular, the electric rate is going up, but we also have usage going up because of things like the new E V lab is going to be using more electricity. We do have new E V chargers on campus which use electricity, which that is offset by revenue, but it's still higher expense. So you see things like that built in here. We have increased, increases in labor and other direct expenditures related to some programs I mentioned before, like welding, as well as communications. We've got two new faculty coming in for welding. We have a new faculty for communications. We are going to have some investments for instructional equipment. We're doubling our classroom budget, or we're proposing to double our classroom enhancement fund budget as well as technology. As I mentioned earlier, we're projecting that the Health and Fitness Center will return one point two five million in F Y twenty six, and our bond payment is one point two two five millions. So again, slightly exceeding there. We're increasing the Technology Infrastructure Improvement Plan to about two million dollars. It had been about one point seven million dollars, so we're improving that. And we're proposing transfers to the plant fund, which you'll see later, to support some upcoming capital projects. I would mention too, the Technology Infrastructure Improvement Plan. We do have some large things going on like cabling and switches. Again, this is to make sure that we have what, you know, I'm sure I T can do more justice to this description than I can, but the backbone of our I T infrastructure. For example, we're moving from CAT five E cables to CAT six A cable, cabling, which maybe Trustee Fleming appreciates that more than some, but it's about, and again, I'm not going to do this justice, but it's about ten times faster. It's more reliable, there's less interference. So we want to make sure we have a good backbone for our students and faculty. So I've kind of gone over, here's some of the expenditures and operating transfers over time. But in total, as I mentioned, revenues going up by seven million. We've also got our expenses going up by seven million dollars. So we're investing in our people, we're investing in our equipment, we're investing in our classrooms, and we're investing in technology. And I would highlight there too, in fiscal year twenty eight, you see a number there in brackets. It looks like a negative three eleven, that's actually positive. So this, again, you're looking at expenses. So a negative expense is actually revenue. And the reason for that is because there's no more bond payment. So when that bond payment goes away, some that, the Health and Fitness Center revenues that come into us or that dividend, if you will, is what you see reflected there. It's a net number against some other stuff, but that's, it's positive. Some of our non-personnel cost increases. So the non-personnel cost is actually not going up too much, only by about three hundred thousand dollars. And again, this is because we've re-timed a lot of expenses. So we were going to do the web, website refresh this year, that's been re-timed into next year. We were going to do the campus master plan this year, that was re-timed into next year. Some other things that we're going to be doing though, we're looking at how we can best apply A I. So how can we apply A I in our curriculums? How can we apply A I to our administrative processes? So, you know, those kinds of things should pay off long-term dividends, but we have to make an initial investment to start looking at those sorts of things. We do have higher bad debt and bank service charges. So during COVID, with some of the COVID funding, we were able to forgive some debts related that students had during COVID. We were able to forgive that. So you're seeing a variance as that bad debt builds back up to its, call it normal level. So I'm not expecting that to continue to go up, but it is a little bit of a variance there. But I would say this is just a normal cost of doing business is the bad debt. But that's student, that's, those are students that for whatever reason, for, just to give you an example, they may have, you know, gotten their Pell Grant, for example. They weren't, if you get a Pell Grant, you have to stay at least sixty percent of the semester. And if you don't, we look at how much you earned or how long you actually stayed in the semester. And that's what the federal government will reimburse, but the rest of it, the college has to pay it back to the federal government. And then we look to the students to collect that. Sometimes we can collect it, sometimes we can't. So we have increases in instructional supplies and durable goods and things like that. I've got another bullet at the bottom there, but those are things that are impacted by inflation. So inflation is staying a little bit higher for a little bit longer than we expected. So we are expecting some impact there. We do have some contractual increases related to software licenses, as well as what you see even this year, as our conference service revenue goes up, our conference service cost goes up as well. So you see that. The next slide here, I wanted to show you, this are the, how much we spend per student. So in, per fiscal year equated student. So this helps us compare what we spend versus what other colleges spend. So we spend about fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars per student. So you can see that, that puts us a pretty, I would say in a pretty good position. So versus other colleges in terms of what we're spending. So people are spending, or colleges are spending up to twenty five thousand dollars per student. But these are total costs, these aren't simply costs on instruction, you'll see that later. This is how much, this slide represents institutional support. So how much are we spending on institutional support versus other colleges? So what do I mean by institutional support? This is overhead. So this is people like me, for example, the general administration, the executive management, legal, other institutional level support functions. So we're spending eleven point six percent per year on, on what I'll call overhead or institutional support. And you can see that that puts us in a very good position. We're the fourth best in the state in terms of what we spend on our administrative support. And I would point out too, that the, the performance formula that the state has of how they increase our funding each year, there's a piece of that performance funding that is based on how much we spend on administrative costs. So the lower your administrative costs are, the more they give you in funding. So we are, we get the, this past year, we got the fourth highest increase for that particular category. So in other words, they considered we had the fourth best administrative cost, they gave us the fourth highest increase. How much are we spending on instruction and academic support? So we are spending fifty four percent of our operating budget on this instructional and academic support. So you can see here at fifty four percent, if you look at the graph, we're right in line with our key peers like Macomb and Oakland, who are also at fifty four percent. In terms of capital projects. So if you look over at the right-hand side of the slide, we see there the Student Center H VAC, which we've not done yet. But that's estimated now, this is a much higher number than you might have seen last year. We got engineering, engineering estimates back. And that not only includes the cost of the actual H VAC, it includes the cost of, for example, moving the staff out of the building temporarily, storing it, paying rent on either trailers, if you want to be on campus or office facilities for that time, and then bringing everybody back. And so it includes more than just the cost of the H VAC itself. So we're estimating that at around twenty million dollars. Master plan initiatives, as I mentioned, we're going to be doing, or we're proposing to do the master plan. In fact, we may start it before the end of this fiscal year, but it's largely going to bleed into next fiscal year. But we're expecting some initiatives to come out of that. We did a master plan, I think it was in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, right before COVID, and then COVID hit. So that plan quickly became obsolete because, you know, students are learning differently. You know, at that time, there were more students on campus, now there are less students on campus. So we're going to be revisiting that. So we put in fifteen million dollars for master plan initiatives. But I would, I would suggest that it's probably going to be a lot of things related to classrooms and students. So even though you see a later line there that says classrooms upgrade of one point five million, those are things we know we need to do in the near term. But a lot of that master plan, those are just unknown right now, we've just put a placeholder. But those are going to be student, largely student related. Student Center front entrance renovation, so that's been planned for a while along with the Student Center H VAC. The L A auditoriums renovation, we currently out-forbid for the first auditorium renovation. So the auditoriums that we have in the L A building, if I'm not mistaken, they've probably never been redone. They're probably original to the campus. So we're looking to put state-of-the-art equipment and do those. So we have a, a very attractive auditorium to be used by our students and faculty. So that's going to be the first of three, so there's three auditoriums in the L A building.
I'm not quite sure what you just said is correct about it, had the auditorium equipment, because it was upgraded. I mean, it's been many moons ago, but it has been upgraded.
Okay, then I may be mistaken, maybe you're talking about some installation of like projectors and such?
No.
What are you?
Sound system.
Okay.
We had a Landau.
Okay.
When he was the board chair here and a trustee, but he.
So what we're referring to here is more.
That wasn't for all the auditoriums?
It was the main auditorium.
Yeah, so we're, we'll be doing all of them here. And this is also to redo the whole thing, including seating, for example. So the seats are, start, some of them are starting to fall apart. So we need to do seating, we need to do things such as soundproofing the rooms, and then also putting in very, the latest and greatest technologies so that we can do things that you can do in like a high flex classroom, so that you could be teaching in person and online at the same time.
Okay, I misunderstood, because I was thinking you were just talking about that one auditorium, when you said auditorium. So I'm thinking that one, but you're also talking about all of the classrooms type?
No, three auditoriums.
Three of them?
Three auditoriums in the L A building is what this refers to.
In L A, okay, all right. Just want some clarification on which one you're talking about, because I know the main one had been done.
Yeah, I, maybe I did, maybe I left out the word L A, but I'm referring to the L A building.
Okay, all right.
My mistake. The, we also have a little bit going into the green fund over the next couple of years, or actually, that's in F Y twenty seven and twenty eight, I think. And then the contingency of five million dollars. Those are just contingencies on some of these projects. So in total, you can see there about fifty million dollars of, of renovations that we need to do. So we do have currently twenty five million dollars in our plant fund. We have planned to transfer four point five million dollars by the end of this year, if not more, which would leave, leave us with a beginning balance there of thirty million dollars to start these projects.
Can you please talk about the classroom upgrades here? What, what is the intention there, or is there a target or general upgrades?
So this, this was referring to technology, it can be seating, it can be desks, but it depends on what the room needs. So the instructional area, we've worked with instructional area with facilities to identify the highest need classrooms. So we've prioritized them in that, in that way. And it depends on what that classroom needs. But it, the idea is to, over time, upgrade these classrooms so that they have the desks that they need, the chairs that they need. Because sometimes a room may need to be more flexible than it did years ago. So it's, it's on a classroom by classroom basis.
And how many classrooms do you believe that this one point five million will address?
Probably fifteen classrooms, twenty, twenty classrooms.
In, in a particular building or throughout?
Yes, yeah, throughout the campus, yeah.
Thank you.
So here's our statement of net activities. So basically the total income statement. You can see here that in F Y twenty six, we have a, a break even budget, slightly negative in F Y twenty seven and F Y twenty eight with the decreases or the less growth and things like property taxes and the reductions in credit hours and so forth. So it's not something that I don't see that we can't overcome. You know, it starts to get a little more difficult when you get out to F Y twenty eight, but we have plenty of time to try to figure out how we can overcome those, overcome those slightly negative variances.
Just dawned on me, when we're looking at tuition increases and fees, you know, we have been flat for years. So is there any way that if, if we decided that we would need to increase our tuition and fees, that this, this forecast would be different? Or would it be about the same?
If we were to, this contemplates increases in tuition and fees for three years for non-in district students. So we are increasing tuition, we're just not increasing tuition for in district students. If we were to propose increases for in district students, yes, it would impact this. But of course, we try to stave that off as much as we can. The last thing we want to do is increase in district student tuition, especially if property taxes are rising. So.
Well. Okay, I'm not going to say what I was going to say. I'm not going to say anymore about it. Well, I am.
We're going to talk about tuition next. Do you want to say it now?
Well, no, then if we're going to talk about it some more, because I really feel strongly now, we have really held the line, I mean, really held the line on, on the tuition. And even if it's one cent, but I'll hold off on this.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So this slide here gives you some insight into our cash, our working capital, our long-term investments. So the green area here are our long-term investments. So this is what I present from time to time, that is what we have presented, invested into long-term bonds. So if you look at the area there between June twenty four, June twenty five, right now, we're at about approximately fifty million dollars, just over fifty million dollars of long-term investments. So we are projecting to increase those a bit over the next couple of years because we want the money working for us until we use it. So even though we have these capital projects planned, we don't leave the money just sitting there. We want to invest it and make sure that it's making money for the college until we actually need it. So, and that's the green area. The gray area is also invested, it's invested in short-term instruments. So again, we don't want any amount of money not working, or we want to minimize the amount of money that's not working. So that's more subject to short-term interest rate fluctuations, so that's the gray area. And then the yellow area is just the cash that we have on hand. This is what we need every day to pay payroll, to pay the expenditures and that sort of thing on a daily basis. So again, we try to minimize that. We only keep as much on hand as we absolutely need to run the business. And we want every other penny working for the college. These are our long-term investment maturities. These are our long-term investment maturities. So what we try to do here is we, we, we have this money invested, but we know we're going to need this money. This isn't money that's just going to sit there forever. So we have it staggered. So we have roughly fifty million dollars, as I mentioned before. So we try to, and it's not perfect, but we try to have roughly seven million dollars a year over seven years. So we don't want to go out too far because you get run into a lot of interest risk when you go out way too far. So we try to keep everything within about seven years. And again, it depends a little bit on what's available out there in the market. That's in terms of maturities, which is why you have FY twenty nine there that's a little higher. And then FY thirty three there that's slower that was bought a few years ago. But, but over time, we try to keep that so that every year we have five, six, seven million dollars coming in so that we can fund projects if we need it.
On this chart, you've got this one point eight percent, two point seven percent. Is that the average rate of return that we're getting on those?
Those are the yields for those particular years.
So as that retires in fiscal year twenty six, if we reinvest that further down the ladder, we'll see a greater return probably. As, as interest rates sit right now, we would see a greater return on that money as it gets reinvested.
That's correct.
And then as we get out to fiscal year twenty nine, as that money drops back to us, there's, we may not be able to find comparable returns at that point to reinvest that.
Right.
We may or may not, but I'm just looking at this coming year, we'll be able to get improved return on that.
Yeah, almost certainly. This coming year, almost, it's almost a certainty that we'll get a higher return. FY twenty nine is hard to predict, you know?
Yes.
In theory, it'll be lower, but who knows?
Right.
And my final chart here for this particular presentation, our unrestricted net position. So I wanted to give you an idea again, when I refer to a strong balance sheet, what do I mean and what should we have? And so if you, there's a couple of, or a few institutions that measure colleges and they determine how strong the college is, or is it too strong, not strong enough? One is NACUBO, which is the National Association of College and University Business Officers. So after the audit each year, I usually show you a metric called the CFI, and it's a kind of a line that goes up into a green part, and it shows you that we're getting stronger. They suggest approximately five months of operating expenses. Institutions like Moody's and S and P. So if we were to ever want to go out for a bond, which we're not planning on doing in the immediate future, but it's always good to have this in mind because they also are just giving you an idea of what makes for a strong public university. They look for six months of liquidity. So it may seem like we have, you know, a lot of money, but we have six months of liquidity. So we, we have a good amount. We are right where Moody's and S and P and NACUBO basically say that we should be. So again, it may appear sometimes that we have too much, but we do not have too much. We have an amount that we can continue to operate, we can continue to invest even in bad times. So that's this particular, that's a conclusion of this particular presentation. So any other questions? And then we can go to tuition and fees.
Very good. Very good.
Okay. Full-time cost comparison. These are in district tuition and fees. So what you see here is how much it costs to go to Washtenaw Community College represented by the green line for one semester. So, so for one semester here, you can see there that it's roughly seventeen hundred dollars. So for all the other Michigan community colleges, the average, you can see it's increased substantially. In fact, it's increased forty two percent over that time, whereas Washtenaw Community College has only increased fourteen percent over that time. Another interesting data point is that inflation over this period is actually been thirty three percent. We've all seen it, especially in recent years, it's been a little higher. But over that period, inflation has been thirty three percent. Yet we've only increased tuition fourteen percent. So if you're familiar with the term called constant dollars, which is basically keeping dollars the same or adjusting for inflation, we've actually gotten twenty percent cheaper. So we're taking twenty percent less of a student's wallet than we would have ten, eleven years ago. These, this slide shows you the increases in in district tuition and fees last year. So the only colleges to not increase in district tuition and fees last year were Washtenaw Community College and Wayne. So every other college increased their tuition. About half of the colleges also increased their fees. But we didn't do either. We didn't increase our tuition or our fees. Here's how much each college has increased their fees and tuition over the past ten years. So you can see here that we're similar to Wayne. We've increased approximately two hundred dollars. We're at two ten, Wayne is at two oh three. Other colleges have increased substantially more. Right? Mid Michigan at the very top there has increased cost by sixty eight percent over that time. Now, again, everybody has different circumstances, but we are trying to keep the tuition affordable for Washtenaw County students.
This is for in district or for all tuition?
This is in district, full-time semester cost for an in district student. So here are our in district tuition rates for fall twenty twenty four, starting in fall twenty twenty four. So you can see here on the left-hand side of the slide, we charge ninety nine dollars per credit hour plus a fifteen dollar infrastructure fee. So of course, we are the most economical choice in terms of our tuition and fees in the state. The right-hand side or the right graph represents the online tuition rates. So there's a little arrow there. All of them are either red or yellow on this chart. So the red arrows show that it costs more to take an online course than it does to take a face-to-face course. The yellow arrows say it's the same cost. Now, the only difference is we put that difference in our tuition, the other colleges put that difference in their fees. But there are several colleges that do that. So we're at one twelve in terms of our online tuition. And we have that, it's a little bit higher, just as a reminder, because we do have higher costs related to maintaining an online program. So we have a complete staff that we pay over two million dollars a year of total cost to maintain that takes care of all of our online courses and that support. So that, this, this incremental tuition helps pay for that online program. So for our out of district, so out of district, we charge a hundred and eighty one dollars for face-to-face, which the, we're second, second most affordable next to Wayne. Wayne keeps their tuition at one twenty one. Our online tuition, again, the arrows are, show you the difference in their online tuition rate versus their face-to-face tuition rate. Different than the previous chart, Washtenaw has a lower tuition for online rates than it does for its face-to-face rates. So I've listed a few of the, the benefits for our in district students. Why, why it's better for our in district students even to have out of district students to have a more affordable rate. So one, it helps us create, you saw, well, first you saw the chart that creates the diverse revenue streams, and it's important for us to have those revenue streams coming in from outside of the county. The non-financial benefits, it's creating a critical mass of students that helps us to maintain programs. There are certain programs that we may not be able to maintain or keep the classes full if we weren't attracting students from outside of the county. It also helps us recruit with a bigger student body, we have a chance to recruit a broader pool of faculty. Having a broader pool of faculty contributes to greater diversity of thought and expertise that we have here on the campus. And it also enriches the experience of the students, right? If you have, if you're exposed to students that are just your neighbors, they're just like you. But if you're exposed to students from other counties, other, other living circumstances, other states, and even other countries, that's going to prepare you to work in a global workforce, which is what we're trying to do. We all are working in a global environment, whether we think so or not. And again, just to reiterate the financial benefits, non-in district online students bring in ten million dollars of incremental revenue per year. And this isn't just a COVID phenomenon. Even before COVID, online, not, non-in district online students were bringing in six million dollars a year even prior to COVID. So it has only gotten better because more students are taking online courses now. But this doesn't represent, even though it costs us more to have the online staff that I mentioned before, it's our sitter staff. There's no incremental cost, right? So the more students we have, it doesn't result in more incremental costs for us other than the cost of instruction, right? So we don't have to have a bigger sitter staff or more buildings or something. So we don't have incremental costs, which was why we don't have to have a greatly incremental tuition, right? And it allows us to pull in, attract students from all around the area.
How many credits do, have we seen this, like this semester, for, for example, of the average fall or winter semester? How many out of district fall credits do we see that we bill for?
Out of district fall, well, for fiscal year twenty four. Out of district, out of district, out of state and international total or just out of district?
I'm just looking at this one page, but I, I'd love to have the numbers on each of these.
Okay, so it's fifty, little over fifty seven thousand credit hours in fiscal year twenty four.
Or out of district?
Out of district online.
Okay. And then out of state online?
Out of state online, ten thousand three hundred.
I just want to be able to look at one or two dollars, how much money would that bring in?
Okay.
And international?
Four thousand.
Four thousand. Okay, thank you.
Our out of state. So you can see here our out of state face-to-face tuition is two hundred fifty six. Our out of state online is a hundred and thirty nine. Among our face-to-face students, we just get two percent of those from out of state. But because of our online programming, eleven percent of our online students are out of state. And finally, international, three hundred and seven dollars per credit hour if they're here on campus and a hundred and forty nine dollars. Again, two percent of all our students are international, but three percent of our online students are international. How about our, our fees? How do our fees compare to other colleges? So our fees are pretty low. You can see Lake Michigan doesn't charge fees, but they have a, quite a high tuition rate. We're very similar to Oakland, McComb. We're within two dollars of Oakland and McComb. And then it just goes up from there. And again, about half of the colleges increased their fees last year and about half of them did not. The other thing I'll point out, we only have one fee. And we do that just so that students don't feel nickled and dimes. I don't know if you ever get a bill and then you think the bill is going to be one thing, and then they tack on three, four, or five fees. It's, it, it, it's not pleasant. So, you know, we're going to have a fee, but it's one single fee. So we thought we'd give you an idea of what other schools are doing. So this is all publicly disclosed. These are rates that have already been, new rates for fall twenty five that have already been announced. The ones that with an asterisk have been proposed to their respective board of trustees. They've not yet been approved, but that's the rate that's proposed. And the ones without an asterisk have already been approved. So you can see here that only Lansing is proposed, Lansing and McComb are not proposing to increase. But everyone else that we know of so far is proposing increases of anywhere from two to four and a half percent. And yeah, this is in district costs. So what's our recommendation? Our recommendation is no increase in tuition for in district students. Again, we're expecting the property tax revenue to pay for in district students. So we don't have to increase the tuition for those students. We are not proposing an increase in fees either. We are proposing, however, to increase non-in district tuition. So the increase in property taxes does, should not be diverted to our, or it's not planning, we're not planning to divert that money to non-in district students. So we are proposing something that's roughly in line with inflation so that they absorb the cost of inflation. So we're proposing a three percent increase to our face-to-face rates for non-in district students. And any, for online courses, we're proposing anywhere from three to five percent increases. So we've tried to do that according to how we're positioned versus other colleges. That's how we determined whether it was three or five percent. So we're trying to still be competitive while also maximizing what we think that we can get for our tuition rates and the value that we provide. Again, we would continue to have the lowest in district tuition per credit hour in the state as well as the lowest online rates for, for in district students in the state. Here are the, here are the actual, here are the actual numbers. So you can see here, just, these are the actual increases. So you can see in districts rates are staying the same. Out of district would go up, well, you can see the rate increases in the next of the last column. Five dollars, eight dollars, nine dollars for the face-to-face rates and four dollars, seven dollars, seven dollars for the online rates. So the incremental revenue by increasing the, these tuition amounts for out of district students, this will provide the college with over a half a million dollars in additional revenues for the next fiscal year alone. And of course, that carries forward to future fiscal years.
Got a question. So these recommendations here are already baked into the statement of activities, balanced budget, looking forward, where we're, your forecast is a balanced budget for fiscal year twenty six. And your forecast for fiscal year twenty seven is a hundred ninety thousand dollar deficit potentially.
Yeah, so.
Given the forecast.
These increases are baked in. That's in there. Plus, for those out years, fiscal year twenty seven and twenty eight, there's an additional three percent per year for out of district students.
It's baked into this?
It's baked into that number.
Okay, so that's not on this slide.
No.
But you're forecasting.
We're forecasting it, but we're just recommending the ones for the upcoming budget year, which is what you would see in the recommendation that will be asking for approval.
Okay, thank you.
So without considering any type of residency, just considering the cost of instruction per credit hour, what is, what does it cost us to produce an hour of credit instruction? For any student?
Well, our base rate that we charge is $99.
I, I understand that that's the tuition rate, but I am asking, what is the cost to the college to produce a credit hour of instruction?
Well, I'd have to calculate that, but we spend $14,700 per student.
Is that a full-time equivalent student or?
Yes, that's a full-time equivalent student. So you can divide that by 30 and that should give you the number.
And that is independent of residency?
Correct.
Okay. So what you're saying ultimately is that the cost per credit hour of instruction to WCC is $490?
Correct.
So if, if 14, 7 per student divided by 30 credits is, is 490 per credit?
I think you have to look at, I think you have to look at it a little, you have to divide these things into groups, right? Because if I have a, let's just say I get 1,000 more in district face-to-face students, I may have to build another building. But if I get 1,000 more online students, I don't have to do anything. So the cost is different for a face-to-face student versus an online student.
I'm just looking at averages.
Yeah.
Regardless of residency, regardless of how they, how a student absorbs that credit.
Right. If you're just looking at averages, correct.
Average is $490 per credit hour. Okay, the other comment that I had regarding the different tuition rates is, I think it's a little bit disingenuous to refer to the online tuition rates of other community colleges. Because I want people to understand that WCC is an anomaly when it comes to having an online tuition rate. Other community colleges in this state don't have an online rate. They merely charge tuition on the basis of in district or out of district. And some of them, there's some nuance there because some of them do have an out-of-state rate. Some of them do have an international rate. But at the very, you know, at, at the getting down to basics. They charge based on whether the student is in their district or out of their district. And so I think it's, and, and while they do offer online classes, they don't necessarily charge differently for those online classes. And so I think it's a little bit disingenuous to refer to their online tuition rates. Because they just charge tuition based on residency.
I'm not sure how it's disingenuous when they charge a fee for online courses. They charge an extra fee for having provided.
They may have an online fee for additional, for online courses, but the tuition rate is not an online tuition rate. It's just a tuition rate. And it's based on the student's residence.
Well, I don't know, tuition and fees are somewhat interchangeable in my mind.
Well, here's, I look at things as student tuition plus fees. And that has, it's one cost per credit.
Yep.
And if you look at the, just as an example, St. Clair College, yeah, their tuition rate for face-to-face and online is $410. But face-to-face, $59 in fees, online, $94 in fees.
Sure.
So that's a, that's a $35 increase, which is a substantial increase percentage-wise in that tuition plus fees. So that's the way I would look at it is, is one package, the tuition plus fees per credit.
What?
And not to say, oh, I think it's disingenuous to say, look at the tuition fees, but not the, the tuition rate, but not the fees. You know, that's, you know, you've got to put them both together.
I, I don't have a problem with that. But I, you know, it's, these schools don't characterize their tuition as an online, as online tuition. And no, none of them do. Because I've looked at every single tuition rate of every single community college in Michigan.
Have you been involved in any of the MCCA organization meetings, any of the ACCT?
I don't need to do that in order to look at their tuition rates.
Yeah, the, the state looks at increases in tuition at community colleges, the same way Dave just said. They look at the cost of the tuition plus any fees attached, they look at it as one figure.
Sure, sure. But I, I think, you know, when you look at these fees that are applied specifically to online courses, it is the acknowledgement that it is more expensive to deliver online coursework than it is to deliver coursework to a student who's sitting in the classroom. The fee is there for a reason. Right?
Put your mic down. Put your mic.
Do you want to answer that? Or you want me to?
Well, go ahead with what you're gonna say.
No, you go ahead. Well, you're better at this than I am, so you go ahead.
I'm sorry, restate your point, please.
So the point is that when a community college adds a fee specifically for online education, it is an acknowledgement that it is more expensive to deliver online coursework than it is to deliver coursework to a student sitting in a classroom.
Well, yes and no, but we, we do have our, our difference between our in-district, online and face-to-faces. We do have that fee, so it is a higher rate. Right? So we do go from $99 for our in-district face-to-face to $112 for online. So we're recognizing that cost that you're talking about, that it is more expensive. However, where we differ is that we, we recognize we have that incremental cost. But for us to add out-of-district, out-of-state, international, we have no more incremental cost. We have, we are paying for that staff no matter what. So we're making an economic argument, not a philosophical argument, we're making an economic argument of we're, we're trying to make those rates a little bit more market-based so that we attract those students. And I think it's, the, the revenues that we have reflect the success of that strategy. I mean, we've, we've brought in, over that 10-year period that I showed earlier, the college has brought in $66 million from out-of-district online students, $66 million. I guarantee you, if we were charging the face-to-face rates plus an online rate, we wouldn't have brought in that $66 million.
But I mean, the whole rationale for having district rates is to acknowledge that the taxpayers in the district take on a special tax obligation to fund the operation of the college. And that students from outside the district pay a higher rate in acknowledgement that they are not otherwise supporting the college. And there is some support that the, that the college receives from the state of Michigan. So an out-of-district rate is going to be higher than a district rate, but is not going to be as high as the rate that you would charge someone from out of state because there is that level of state support. Then there is, you know, the, the college does receive some federal funding. Less than, you know, probably less than what they receive from the state, probably, you know. And so there is some subsidy for a student who is, whose residency is out of the state, but not out of the country. And then finally, you're dealing with the international student where there is no governmental subsidy from, you know, any other country. So you would expect the international student to be paying that $490 per credit hour of instruction. And so when you do things like you set an online tuition rate and you set it substantially lower than the out-of-district rate or the out-of-state rate, you are not acknowledging the fact that the taxpayers inside the district have made an extraordinary investment in this facility for decades. And it, I, I can tell you, I have spoken to people who, who are extremely uncomfortable with that. Because you eliminate the whole rationale for district, in district and out-of-district tuition. And you, you place the burden for supporting the physical facility on the taxpayers of Washtenaw County. And you give students from outside the district a huge break for the benefit of attending, even if virtually, the college.
I, I think you're, I understand what you're saying. But I think you're failing to acknowledge that the, the revenues that we bring in, for example, that $66 million is defraying some of the cost for Washtenaw County taxpayers. So that's one. And two, I think you're not appreciating the qualitative impact that having those students come in, represented from international students, out-of-state students and out-of-district students. Those, those mean more programs for in-district students. We may not be able to support as many programs and courses if we didn't have these out-of-district students coming in. So that's a benefit to Washtenaw County students. Having exposure to someone from India or from China, they're not necessarily going to get that if it's just Washtenaw County students. So we're trying to be more holistic in our approach. And it's not, we're not just looking at dollars and cents. We're trying to deliver value for the student and a good experience, a good student experience. It's not simply taking the credit hours and dividing it up. We're not doing it to the traditional way that you're speaking of, of which I'm familiar. But we're not doing it that traditional philosophical way.
So, but you are still charging an out-of-district rate for a student who drives into campus from Livingston County?
Yes.
Who would potentially also be adding the diversity to the classroom that that person is sitting in?
But if I, but if I get a.
They're not paying taxes that help support the college.
Certainly, but what I'm saying is.
So what the differential rates, what the differential rates are acknowledging is the people coming from in district are coming from taxpaying families or they're renters and the part of their rent money goes to pay property taxes. So they're getting the benefit of helping to support through taxes the infrastructure costs of the college and instructional staffing and everything. They're getting the benefit of that and it's reflected in a rate that's lower than the person coming from Livingston County whose tax dollars are not supporting the college.
I.
Or the person that's coming in offline, online from Colorado.
I.
Who's not, also not supporting the college with their taxes.
Right.
So there's, but the taxpayer, the in-district students are getting a lower rate, which acknowledges.
I, I understand, I understand that. But what I am saying is we are affording a benefit to an online student who is out of district that, you know, that we don't afford to out-of-district students.
What's the benefit?
The benefit is lower tuition.
No, they're paying a higher. You're, you're saying that everybody should be paying $459 a credit or whatever that.
I'm saying, I'm saying that tuition should be charged on the basis of residency. And if an online student comes to the college from.
No institution is charged like that.
If, if an online student comes from out of district, they should be paying the out-of-district tuition rate.
They are, they are.
They are.
They are paying it.
Jackson, for one, Jackson County doesn't, their county does not support their college, never have.
Aware of that.
Never have.
I'm well aware of that.
Okay, good.
No millages.
But they have international, in fact, they were pretty much the first college that started getting international students and charging a humongous salary, I mean, a, a tuition fee, tuition and fees. Okay, so I, I guess, I think this panel right now is trying to figure out, where are you going with this? Because right now, there's other things we need to discuss and you're really digging into the deep woods and, into the sand in this. So we need to wrap this up. Say what you have to say and let's move on.
What I am saying is our out-of-district tuition rate is $181 per credit hour. But that's not what we charge online students who are coming here from out of district.
It was the issue.
What?
So I would, so I would, I would say, I'm reiterating what I said before, but if we have, if I have 1,000, just as an example, I don't know if this is the precise number. If I have 1,000 more face-to-face students coming in from out of district, I may have to build another building to accommodate another 1,000 students or 2,000 students or whatever the case may be. If I get another 1,000 or 2,000 online students, I don't have to do anything. I don't have to build a building, I don't have to pay maintenance staff, I don't have to do any of that. So it's, to me, it's a different calculus. It's a different calculus for online than for face-to-face. Because we have to have a physical infrastructure for someone to come here on campus face-to-face. We do not have to have much of a physical infrastructure for online programming.
All right, anything else?
So the only other thing was, this is just the, based on our presentation. These are our, this is just up for discussion tonight, it would be on the board agenda for next month. But these are our proposed on-campus tuition rates as well as our distance learning tuition rates. These are our, this is our proposal.
My only concern, I, I totally agree with the structure that you've proposed, which charges more for out-of-district and still more for out-of-state and still more for international. I feel like taxpayer, people that are taxpayers here in this county are getting a benefit with the rates that are lower that we charge. So I feel like the philosophical basis for that structure is, I support that. The one question I have is I've encountered, or I've had some students approach me who are in-district students whose taxes support the college, who have to pay more for an online class, even though they come to campus face-to-face, they have to pay more for the, and this is a different than the out-of-district student that comes to campus and actually has to pay less for an online class. An in-district student has to pay more for an online class than for a face-to-face class. And if they choose that, if they're offered both, if they're offered both the opportunity for face-to-face or online and they choose the online, I view that that could be put on them. But I've had a couple of students say, I need this class for my program. The only way I could take it is through this online offering. And I have to pay more for that than I do for my in-district, for my face-to-face classes. And I have to agree with them. When they, when they ask me that question, I have to shrug my shoulders and say, I'm going to find out what we can do about that. And that's, that's the problem that I see in the rate. Philosophically, I'm totally on board with the overall rate structure with that one problem that I feel so bad for that student that comes up to me and asks me with that situation. So somehow I'd like to have an answer to that. I don't think it would cost a lot for the college to find that answer. But some, I'd like to be able to find that answer where they, if they have to take that class for their program, that they could, and it's only offered online, is there some way that we can give them the face-to-face rate? And that's, if we could do that, I'd like to figure out the way to do that. And that's, if we could do that, I'd like to figure out the way to do that.
I mean, we could look at, I think administratively, that might be difficult. But I know that, uh, I don't know if EVP Tucker or Provost Blakey can help me, but I know that wherever possible, we try to offer face-to-face and online versions. We always try to do that. Now, sometimes, there may not be the demand for one or the other, and therefore, we have to cancel. Um, but generally speaking, we're, we offer in both modes.
Well, I've, I had a student tell me that they couldn't find, they couldn't get the face-to-face.
That could be a situation where it was offered on-ground and offered online, and the on-ground section was full, and therefore, they had to take the online section. But even out of our, as of Fall '25 or '51, programs that are available fully online, we try to also have those on-ground sections. Now, to CFO's point, it depends on the demand, right? Because criminal justice, for example, we offer both on-ground and, yeah, online. We've seen a significant growth in online criminal justice, where there may not have been an online offering, because there were three people interested compared to '27 that were online. So I think it does depend. Uh, but we try to have both section, both offerings of on-ground and online.
I understand that, but that doesn't solve the problem that the student is facing of having to pay the higher tuition rate, even though they'd like to take it face-to-face and pay the lower tuition rate. So that's what I, I want to solve that problem for that individual.
I think it's not just one individual, it's all of them that's taking online classes. And at this point in time, um, I think, um, students, um, when, whenever the president has her open office time, they need to talk to her about this stuff, you know? I mean, we can do some things as trustees, but we're not the policy, I mean, not policymaker, but we're not the ones who's actually doing the things. The president, if they talk to the president, I think this, this is, a lot of the issue could be resolved through her, to her staff.
Well, that's why I'm raising it here.
Right.
I support the general overall thing. I'm raising this as a, as a small problem that does affect some students. I'm not proposing a solution. I'm just identifying as something that it would be nice for some administrative attention to look and see if there is a solution. Who knows? How many students do you think are so involved? I don't know. I've, I've only, over the last, say, three or four years, I've had maybe five students at various things ask me about this. Maybe that many, maybe four. So, but I don't, if somebody's asking me about it, there's probably other students who I don't eat, sit down and have coffee with or go, uh, to, uh, visit in, in a class when I stop in to see one of the faculty members, you know? It's like, but, so I don't have, I don't have regular office hours or coffees. Like, maybe I should. Maybe I should do coffee with a, with a trustee, and I'd consider doing that and advertising it in your voice.
Okay.
But just with the limited number of contacts, I've, I've had a handful of people that have given me that particular problem. And if you want me to see if there's more, I'll stew coffee with a trustee.
No, no, we believe you.
Ruth, go ahead, Ruth.
I doubt if there are that many students who have this problem. And it seems to me that somewhere in the, um, maybe not where the student fees are mentioned, I was, I was thinking of suggesting that there be a sentence that says, any dispute should go to such and such, but we don't want to invite disputes when you're talking about this. But in the student handbook or someplace where a student could go, where do they go if they have that problem? They don't go to Dave DeVarty, because he can't fix it. So you want to go to Linda, you want to go to VP, you want to.
It's a good suggestion.
President.
It's a good suggestion.
It should be somewhere in their, their handout, and probably already there, that says, if you have a dispute about tuition and fees, that's where you go.
That's a very good suggestion.
And you can make exceptions, I'm sure, depending on, if that was a real situation, you'd either, you'd either.
I'd fix it. I would fix it.
You'd either hand them $13 and say, good luck, or you'd fix it.
Absolutely, we'd fix it.
Tell them, tell them where to go.
And I want to say too, if you're having a problem, I mean, that's why we have financial aid office. That's why we have, uh, our, um, counselors. Say, you know, who, where could I go to get extra money? The foundation. We, there's the president, there's, there's trustees, there's the, uh, foundation. We have scholarships. We can help, we have all kinds of money to help students with their tuition and fees. So, you know, this, this isn't just a, I understand what you're saying, but this sounds like an isolated incident, where there's monies out here, and it's everywhere, publicized. It's in handbooks, it's in this and that. So, you know, it's not just one thing. And I, I, and I want to say this too, right here. I, I take offense that when a trustee tries to take on the, the burdens and, 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 and concerns of students that can be handled in a different way. Trustees are here for, far as I'm concerned, we are elected to be fiduciaries of this institution. That's what we are here.
I have to strenuously disagree. I'm elected by this student that I'm talking to. That student votes for us. That person is my constituent, and they're, and they're a taxpayer. I'm here to represent the, I'm here to represent them. We have two different philosophies about this. So don't tell me what, don't tell me that I can't represent my constituents.
Trustees.
Let's let, let's let Mr. Tucker say something here.
You're wrong.
So there, there is one avenue. In this case, the students can fill out a report of concern. Um, those forms either go to Linda's office or my office that could deal with this. So in, in the future, uh, for any trustee, i- if, if there's an issue, they can fill out that report of concern, and we would deal with it. Right, Linda?
Yeah.
Immediately, so.
But you know what?
Yep.
If I may, but that is a good suggestion, Ruth, to somehow bring it to a student's attention. They might not, they might not realize that what trustee DeVarty brought up is a concern, you know? And, um, so a notation somewhere, somewhere of some sort, that would be a good, that sounds like a good, it's a good recommendation.
And they don't know how to, to, you know, make an exception or.
That's a very good.
Ask somebody for help or something, so. And Linda, Linda will give them $13. It's not a problem.
I know she will. Times, times three or four credits.
Also too, that's the counseling department too.
You don't have very many counselors.
That's right. There are advisors now.
We have advisors. When I was here, it was counselor.
Anything else, VP Barnes?
I'm all set.
Okay, you're good. Fork? All right, any other questions for VP Barnes at this time?
You did good.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for this report.
All right, at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Some will vote support.
Any discussion?
Hearing none, uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, do we have to vote or?
We should. Just a good voice vote.
Oh, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
Did we say that was unanimous?
Yeah, that was unanimous.
Aye.